I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Counselor Damian Penn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are doing storytime. So last week, during our family evening devotions, we were studying God's ferocious love. And parallels were drawn to God and the sun. Naturally, this brought up more questions about the sun. How big it is, how far away it is. And very quickly, it became apparent that Dad doesn't have all the answers when it comes to space. Eventually, after a rapid-fire barrage of whys and hows, it was clear that if I wanted to still maintain the illusion to my children of being the smartest person in the world, I would need to go searching for more answers. So, Taylan, Anakin, I hope this can answer some of your questions. And for everyone else, maybe you can learn something, too. One of the first questions asked was, what's in space? Well, at least they started me off with a softball. This one was easy. The answer is simply space. The cosmos is quite literally just a whole lot of empty space with nothing in it other than a few balls of burning gas and rocks dotted millions of light-years apart. But that doesn't satisfy a young mind wanting something to look at, touch, and really understand how big our solar system, galaxy, and universe really is. So, how do we get to the bottom of this problem? I was given this tiny little dime by my daughter to represent the Earth. A dime is eighteen millimeters in diameter and represents the smallest coin in Canadian currency. In researching just how colossal space was and the scale needed to represent space, I'm quite glad that she chose a dime rather than a beach ball. So, getting back to the sun. If this dime represents the Earth, how large would the sun be? The sun is just under 1.4 million kilometers in diameter. And if the Earth is this dime, that would mean the sun is very close to the same size of the city's crust above the mayor's head. Okay, now that we have established just how small and insignificant the Earth is compared to the sun, let's answer the question of how far away would this dime need to be from the crust to represent the scale? Well, of course, that varies as the Earth travels around the sun. But on average, the sun is 150 million kilometers away from the Earth, meaning we would need to go for a bit of a walk, go down to the front steps that lead up to City Hall, and at the bottom of the landing is where this dime would need to be. Seems crazy, right? Well, we can take that even further. In terms of distance from one object in space to another, the Earth is a mere hop, skip, and jump away from the sun. How about our recently demoted planet of Pluto? Well, our poor Pluto would be smaller than the top clicker of my pen. And we would need to exit into the parking lot, hop in our car, and begin traveling north on Highway 12. We'll wave as we pass the clock tower, say goodbye to the Ford dealership, keep on rolling past Rocco's. And eventually, when we get to Penner International, we would find this tiny rock at the edge of our solar system. It's truly incredible how large everything is in space. And because it's already past our kids' bedtime, I'll give them one more. And hopefully, Mom won't have too many words with me later. Let's really make our heads rattle and show just how small and insignificant we are when we look at a galaxy. Our puny, minuscule Earth is located within one of the 200 to 2 trillion galaxies that there are estimated to be. The closest large spiral galaxy to us is the Andromeda Galaxy, which is a staggering 2.5 million light-years away. So, this is our little Earth. In order to find the next galaxy, you would need to hop onto a spaceship and travel out to Jupiter when the Earth and Jupiter are at their closest points in orbit. Space is space. It's a whole lot of nothing. So, now that I have really made us all self-reflect about how small and insignificant we are as a tiny little speck on a dime, let me assure you, you are made special. Ephesians 2:10 says, "For we are God's hand, you were created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared for us to do in advance." The good works we do to affect our microscopic, insignificant, paltry planet change our world. And you were put here for a purpose with your good works planned in advance. This means you were planned in advance. And of all the millions of different cell combinations that could have occurred by some miracle or perhaps intelligent design, you somehow drew your first breath at birth and were put here for a purpose. I hope that even in this unimaginably expansive universe, you find your purpose every morning and appreciate just how significant and special you are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good night, kids.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any comments?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We have the minutes of February 6th, 2024, the regular council meeting. They start on page one. Counsel, we've all had a chance to review. Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none. We are just a little bit behind or past 7:35, so we'll go directly into our public hearing. This is referring to Bylaw 2235, Public Reserve Closing for Heritage Parkway. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bylaw 2235, as you noted, is a bylaw being considered by council for the proposed closing of a part of a public reserve under Plan 64165. The existing public reserve is located just to the north of the existing limits of Heritage Parkway, which is again just north of Lowen Boulevard in Steinbach. Purpose of the bylaw is to close a portion of this public reserve to permit the extension of Heritage Parkway as provided in the attached sketch in your council agenda package. Notices as were required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on the file. The application will support a proposed subdivision of the area to support institutional development within Steinbach. Correspondence was received from community planning, who indicates no general concerns with the proposed bylaw. Provided the applicant to the subdivision completes what is called a Heritage Department Review of the said lands prior to the final adoption of the public reserve closing. Recommendation from administration is council give this bylaw second and third readings.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, or objections to this file? Seeing none, I will ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting again. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Second, Counselor Swakesher. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a small request by the Steinbach Campus Foundation or on behalf of the Steinbach Foundation to change a public reserve. And then, they are making plans on extending the grounds around the Steinbach Campus Foundation. And this would just help with their future planning of the site as they wish to develop more of it.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to approve this, essentially changing public reserve into a road allowance. So that way, the Heritage Parkway can be extended. As Counselor Siemens had mentioned, this will enable the Steinbach Campus Foundation to be able to proceed with the next phase of development. So, we should approve this.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing.
Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, we're just a little bit ahead of 7:45, so we'll go down to...
Third reading.
Third reading.
First.
Third reading, okay, I missed that. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll go right into third reading? Yeah, second and third reading. Motion for third reading. Seconded by...
Motion to approve.
Nothing further to add?
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, so we're still just a little bit before 7:45, so we'll move on to administration. 9E, we've got accounts payable in the back of the book. We've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Hebert. Any comments?
Just paying our bills. Thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We've got 9B. This is Bylaw 2241. This is rezoning. It's referring to 268 and 274 Home Street. This is first reading. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bylaw 2241 is, as you mentioned, applicable to 268 and 274 Home Street in Steinbach. The owner of 268 Home Street is Kingdom Home Building, Inc. The owner of 274 Home Street is Tommy and Sandra Petkow. The applicant for Bylaw 2241 is Kingdom Home Building, Inc. Purpose of Bylaw 2241 is to rezone the subject properties from RLD, residential low-density, to RMD, residential medium-density, to allow for the development of a multifamily building on the two sites. Recommendation from administration is for council to give this bylaw first reading. And if first reading is approved, a public hearing could be scheduled for a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Swakesher. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There is quite a lot of development and activity going on in that area right now. And it would be great, good to hear from the public at a public hearing as to how they feel about this being added to the construction going downtown right now.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would obviously be a significant change in the neighborhood if this rezoning went ahead. And so, I am in favor of first reading so that way we have an opportunity to hear from the applicant and also give the neighborhood an opportunity to comment. And then, a decision will be made at that time.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel?
One question for admin. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. On page 3024, it says that there'll be one multi-building on the two lots. And on page 25, again, it says one 32-unit building. But when we look at the plan on page 35 or on page 34, it says two multi-unit buildings on the two lots. So, my gathering from the plan drawing is there's going to be two buildings.
I believe you are correct in all three observations. The application was originally for two single-family lots to be separate. However, my understanding is there has been an amendment since that original application was filed just due to particular circumstances and limitations of the site. I believe the intention is to create a single building across both properties.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Thank you.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Call for the question. All those in favor, first reading. Opposed, that is carried. Well, counsel, we have hit just about. We're at 7:45, so we will go back to our delegation. Today, we've got the Pat Porter Active Living Center coming to be a delegation here. And they are going to talk about the host bid for the Manitoba 55+ Games in 2025.
Hello, thank you again for having me. So today, I'm talking about the Manitoba 55+ Games. Russ Dick and I have been approached by Active Aging in Manitoba to place a bid on the 55+ Games for 2025. I've had several conversations with Russ Dick, as well as Dan Talifer and other community stakeholders just to see if there's some interest, if there's a way to do this. And the overwhelming response has been that it would be great timing, not only because it's been over 12 years since we've had it here, but because the Southeast Event Center will be open and running at that point. It's an amazing opportunity for a community to collaborate and showcase who we are and what we have to share with people throughout the province. The purpose of the 55+ Games is to provide recreation outlet for friendly competition for those who are 55 and over, to provide and promote opportunities and contribute to the education, culture, social activity, and general well-being of Manitobans 55 and older, as well as engender a sense of community spirit by providing an opportunity and catalyst for bringing older adults, their families, and the community at large together to participate in the games. The proposed dates are June 3rd, 4th, and 5th of 2025. We've asked to have it moved a little bit earlier than they usually are just because we have Summer in the City Festival coming shortly after that, so we wanted to keep it a bit separate. The Southeast Event Center, Pat Porter Active Living Center, the Bowling Alley, Aquatic Center, Flying Golf Course, Parks and Recs, all would benefit from the event. And we would be able to provide all the required events plus a few additional events just based on what we have already. It does bring over 1,000 people. So this is an exceptional opportunity for our community to showcase. And we all know how much I love Steinbach. And I think it's just an excellent opportunity to be able to brag and show it off a bit. So today, I'm here for two reasons. First of all, to ask for a letter of support to include with our application, which is due on February 29th. So if we do receive one by then, that would be great. Also, to consider assisting us, if we're selected, to pay for some of the costs of renting facilities. If we are selected, though, we will come back at a later time and have that conversation and see if you'll be able to do that for us. Yeah, so...
At this time, the only ask is for the letter of support?
Yeah, the letter of support right now so we can get things going and start to figure out costs and see how that works. We do have to fundraise. It's separate from everything else that we all do in the community. So we'd have to fundraise and get sponsors and all of that as well. So it wouldn't just be the city expecting to pay for it all. It would just be to assist in some of that.
Is there a minimum contribution that is required in order for you to be selected? Not at this time?
Not that we're aware of, no. No, at this point, we just have to provide what we can hopefully get together. And this community's always been great, so we're hoping that that will be helpful as well.
So, the letter of support you need by February 29th?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Oh, we do lots of letter supports. We can do that, and that'll go with your application?
Yes.
And then, you'll be coming back in...
Probably like September.
Just seeing what we've done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions of counsel?
I was just thinking, there's a number of communities that are applying to get it there.
Yes.
We are just one of many.
Yeah. However, they have approached us, they've approached me five years in a row, I think. But they also approached Russ this time as well. So, he kind of gave me the push to get things going. I've already started to kind of gather a committee of people so that, you know, there's different members in the community who would be part of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, thank you for presenting and giving us a little snapshot of what you're doing. And I think, yeah, we can probably get that letter for you within a few days. And then, it can go with your application. Okay? Yes?
Just referencing the previous Manitoba Society of Seniors request for council support back when it last hosted the Seniors Games. At the time, and if the process is similar, council did actually consider a resolution indicating its support for the bid formally in addition to providing a letter, if council wishes.
I guess it would be a little stronger to put together with the letter. And we give a big... Counsel, would you like to do a resolution?
Yes.
Would you like to move it?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity for our community. And I just actually wanted to give a shout out to Audrey. I mean, you're practically a regular, it feels like, at these meetings. But that speaks to your commitment to Steinbach. So I appreciate all the work you're doing, your other involvement, and then also this. So that's very appreciated. And I mean, especially with our new event center opening up, that is great timing. And I look forward to being able to do more of this type of thing as a result of having that facility.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joining Counselor Penner with regards to the resolution, having large events like this isn't only beneficial to the athletes and the community, but can also spur on new recreational opportunities for spectators that can find an interest in sports that they may not normally participate in or view without being spurred on by the activities in the community. So, it has spin-off benefits as well.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Yes, counsel, I agree with what's been said. I think sports are a really good way of drawing people together. And because there's, everyone can be involved in sports. You can be more of a spectator like I am, you know, or you can be actually a participant. But I think that is what brings communities together. And I think this is, 1,000 people coming into our community is fairly significant. Even like it's for three days, it's a weekend. And we can really showcase what Steinbach's all about. And I'm looking forward to using the new event center. I think that this is what it's for. It's for bringing people to our community to do sports and have activities and have events. So I think this is great. And I will really support this motion. I think we'll get this letter out and see how the application does. Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, we have another delegation here today. This is Mr. Bob Barrow. And he's coming to speak to us about rapid flashing low-level pedestrian crossing light.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening.
Welcome here.
Great to be here. I've been talking to all you people via Gmail and email and Facebook, all that kind of stuff. So it's good to see you face to face. My purpose from being here today is actually to save lives. What got me going on this was a very sad death three years ago in Winnipeg, St. Anne Road. As you well know from my documentation, eight-year-old boy got killed crossing St. Anne's. Three cars stopped, the one that didn't stop hit him and killed him. And that was three years ago. I was told by MTI that they were going to do a study that they count how many cars, they count how many people cross the crosswalks. Crosswalks, as I've been mentioning, are on Main Street between Quality Detail and Joe Duen Law Office. It leads to Almdale School. Another one is between the Bowling Alley and 711 across Brant Avenue, both very busy roads, as you all know. So, and then on December 15th, I witnessed, I was parked there myself on Main Street. I witnessed three young girls crossing the crosswalk. Unfortunately, the fourth car didn't stop, but the girls had just stepped off the median at the time, or we could have lost three kids in a matter of seconds. The timing had have been different. So what they did in St. Anne and throughout Winnipeg now is they've installed these rapid flashing low-level lights. Right now, at those two crosswalks, they have high-yellow flashing lights. And shortly after I brought this out, three years ago, a young fellow was hit on Main Street because the sun was in the eyes of the driver. He was driving west. The sun was in his eyes. He didn't see the kid crossing. So the low-level lights will get those lights down to about seven feet. And there's two lights. They're rapid flashing. Some places, they're red, some places, they're yellow. But they're very difficult to miss. They'd be on both sidewalks and in the middle on the median. I haven't heard back from MI about their study. I probably never will, it's been three years now. And I understand the council is in favor of this. And that's why I'm here tonight to make it official. And I just hope that good things come from it. Oh, one more thing. I did talk to the people that work at Joe Duen Law Office, and they tell me there's events taking place on the crosswalk all the time. Horns honking, tires screeching, kids yelling, pedestrians, drivers yelling and screaming. If you want to talk to them to get more information, please feel free to do so. I even encouraged them to put up a camera pointing at the crosswalk. So if there's an incident there, they'll have proof of who's at fault and who wasn't at fault. I don't know if they'll do it or not, but we'll see. Anything else you want to know from here?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Barrows.
Bob is good. Thanks, please.
Thank you, Bob. Counsel, Bob has been emailing me off and on for a while on this. And with the fact that he hasn't heard back from MI, I thought it was time to bring him to a council meeting and present in front of us and see if there's something we can do. I don't know if counsel's open to making a motion and writing a letter with this presentation to MI to see if there's some movement we can do to make our crosswalks a little safer that are on these roads. Yes, Counselor Swakesher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would certainly be happy to make a motion that the council supports the request from Mr. Barrow and that this letter be forwarded to Manitoba Infrastructure.
Okay. And seconded by Counselor Hebert? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, safety is important. And I appreciate the presentation that Mr. Barrow was given. And we've all been on the receiving end of your emails. We have received the info. Obviously, this is not directly within city jurisdiction because this is a provincial highway. But I think that by the city adding its voice to the request and letting the province know about it, and also the fact that this will also get into the news, I think these are all good ways of adding profile to the request. Because obviously, we want to have the safest crossing possible. And if the province is able to make these types of changes, I think this would be very positive. So I certainly support the request.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Bob, you've been at it for a couple of years. I know that we've talked many times, and you're not giving up. And I think this is a good cause. We want our streets to be safe. We want these crosswalks to be safe. So I totally support this letter.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get something done there. Thank you.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
No.
Well, counsel, I will support this as well. And I mean, there is proof here that without any lights on a crosswalk, then as kids, as people use them, it can spell tragedy for the person walking. I think this is probably a good way to add another layer of safety at these crosswalks. And I think I'd like to join Bob in his quest to help make our crosswalks safer for the young, our future, the young kids that are using them. Call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's not just young, but it's older guys like myself, too, that cross those places. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Take care. Thanks. Okay, counsel, we'll continue in administration. 9C, this is Bylaw 2242. This is street renaming Blind Creek Boulevard. We'll be doing first and second reading today. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, Bylaw 2242 is a bylaw proposing a street renaming for the street currently named Clear Spring Drive, which is located just north of Clear Spring Mall property on the west side of PTH 12 to Blind Creek Boulevard. A portion of that existing road allowance was already renamed previously. The proposed continuation of this renaming would make the street name consistent from its beginning to its end. Recommendation from administration is this bylaw be given firsthand second readings.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's customary that as developers open up roadways or develop in areas, they name their roads, be it that there are no current residential properties or anything else abutting off of it. It now would be a good time to get that... else abutting off of it, it now would be a good time to get that done, so that there's less headaches for people later when they're having to change their addresses, so. I don't see any reason why we can't move forward past first reading.
Thank you.
Nothing further, thank you.
Anything further of council? Anything closing? Over the question, all those in favor, first reading? Opposed, that is carried. We'll go directly into second reading, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Seaman's, second by Counsel Hebert. Any comments?
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
We'll call for the question. All those in favor, second reading? That is carried. 9D, we have got business licenses, starting on page 42. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Swexer. Any comments?
We just appreciate all the businesses that are opening up and buying the licenses here in Steinbach, so, thank you.
Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 9E, building permits on page 45. Looks like we had a good month. Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swexer. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
I mean, what an incredible way to start the year, coming off the heels of an incredible year last year. I know last year, we were always saying how, you know, commercial and residential are usually, you know, close to 50/50, and then last year, kind of blew that out of the water, being primarily commercial, and that kind of seems to be what's happening here. We've got the Bethesda Hospital expansion on here, so that is just a significant investment at $7.5 million, and obviously something our community needs, but we've also got, you know, a few more big projects with a multifamily and another retail store, so off to a great start, is what we like to see.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're certainly, as Counsel Penner had said, we're off to a good start. The biggest item on here in January is the Bethesda Hospital expansion, but we also have some, some new residential development happening and some commercial structures as well, so January is off to a good start with a year-to-date permits of already $10 million.
Anything further of council? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Well, I, I concur. What a, what a fantastic month, and like, like Counsel Susan Penner said, on the heels of a record year of last year, over 200 million, and now we've, we have a, probably one of the better, probably one of the best Januaries we've had. Like, it's just, it's incredible. And again, commercial being very strong. Commercial and institutional is alive and well in the city of Steinbach. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 9F, we've got excavator licenses on page 46, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert. Any comments?
We need excavators to do construction, so I'll be happy to approve.
Here, here.
Anything further? Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We've got 9G, this is the farm use payback. We, we're looking for a resolution. Mr. Workin, would you want to introduce this?
I can. Just briefly, the, the farm use payback is similar to supplementary tax calculation, but it pertains particularly to farmland only, where there is a particular farm use assessment, application process that can be entered into by landowners. However, in the event that the actual farm use does change to another type of use at some point in the future, there is an opportunity for municipalities to claw back the difference in taxes that would have been calculated. That's what this particular farm use tax payback schedule represents, as a result of certain property originally assessed as farm property being converted to other more intensive uses, either residential or commercial. Recommendation is to, to approve the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Workin. Council, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Swexer, second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead, Counsel.
I've got nothing.
Anything further?
Counsel Swexer could convince me.
Okay. It's pretty good, isn't he? Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, or any, any questions of council today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to correspondence and petitions. We've got 11E, Agape House sponsorship request. We've all had a chance to look. Our council, how would you like to proceed? Take his information at this time? Okay? There's no other business? Looking for motion to adjourn? Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And the next council, uh, next regular council meeting is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, 7:30 PM. Thank you.